Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Okay, it's August the 12th, 2025. It's about, I don't know, Shelby is about five minutes accurate. 9:05 a.m. Regular meeting, Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas. Call this meeting to order. If you would all please rise and I'll give the pledges and Commissioner Clark, give the invocation.
American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our beautiful Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for this opportunity to meet and do the counties and the people of the county's business. Lord, we ask you to guide us in our decisions and do the best we can for the citizens that we represent. In your most precious name, we pray.
Amen. Well, I don't have any notices or proclamations this morning, so move on down to public comment, and nobody signed up to public comment, so we'll keep on moving along. Any declare conflicts of interest? Anybody on the court have any conflicts of interest to declare today? Okay. All right, we'll move on down to the consent agenda, if y'all had the opportunity to look at it, and if so, let me check with Mr. Gott. We have any add-ons today, or we good? Okay.
There's no add-on, I was gonna make a little improvement. Wait. Huh? Oh, you said you did that.
No, just that number seven on the side of the box.
Yeah.
Pardon me, this is Lee. Dwayne, you're supposed to add the $40 for my staff. Angela sent it over.
Sorry, I couldn't understand you, Lee.
We have a new staffer that needs a $40 cash pocket. Angela sent over a budget amendment for the consent agenda, authorized the county auditor per Local Government Code, Section 130.902D, to increase the change fund used for daily operations in the county clerk's office by $40 due to the addition of one new cash drawer.
That be considered an addition? Okay. All right. And we will get the, I'll do the information item just after this. Okay. All right. Let's say the court, I believe it was Greg that made the motion. Anybody make a say?
I'll say it.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So, all right. For Mr. Gott, we have a presentation of the fiscal year September 30th, 2024, audited financial statements and single audit report by Patillo, Brown &amp; Hill, LLP CPAs. So, come on up here and visit with us. Mr. Representative, if you would, please state your name so Shelby can get it in the court records and we're gonna...
I'm just at the little glow.
There you go. Yeah.
All right. Yes, I'm Cameron Aaron with Patillo, Brown &amp; Hill, Audit Supervisor. And each of you, we have three deliverables that were placed in front of you, so you should all have it. The big one is the audited financial statements, a separate single audit report. Sometimes it's just included with the big one. We just decided to keep it separate, keep it simple, but it's there. And then, a communication letter, which is, we either have to tell you in person or in written form, and we think it's just easier to give it to you in written form, so you have it there.
Okay.
Well, thank you for choosing Patillo, Brown &amp; Hill as your outside auditors. It was a good year, it was quick, and I think it, everyone was pleased with how the work went, the communication between whoever we needed to talk to, and it was really a good work environment to be in. I'll just jump in, the big audited financial statements on page one, there's independent auditor's report at the very top. And so, this is our opinion letter. And the second paragraph up at the top section says, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the respective position, financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, aggregate remaining fund for the county as of September 30th, 2024." And so, that is a clean opinion. We're saying that it's free of any material misstatements. We didn't modify that opinion in any, in any matter. There's an emphasis of matter, just, just a paragraph explaining changes in accounting principles, which wasn't too painful. Sometimes they get a little difficult to implement for everybody, but this year it was just Gadsby's Statement 100, accounting changes and error corrections. And then on page three, there's a separate paragraph, "In accordance with government auditing standards, we also issued our report dated the same day, today, in consideration with county's internal controls over financial reporting and the test of compliance with certain provisions, laws, regulations, grant, grant contracts, that sort of thing." That is that second, the single audit report, there's a letter in there that talks about that. And I'll just go ahead and jump over to that so y'all can see in the single audit report. And page one is that reference, is referencing this page, "Report on compliance and other matters." It's page one down, the last paragraph at the bottom, "As part of our obtaining reasonable assurance about whether the county's financial statements are free of material misstatement, we performed these tests of compliance, certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, et cetera." And we do not express an opinion on these matters, but we are required to give you the results of those tests. But we found no internal control deficiencies, no material weaknesses that we found. So if we did, we would reference those here, but it says, "The results of our tests disclose no instances of non-compliance." So congratulations on the clean opinion on the financial statements and no major issues that we found in internal controls. The very next letter in that smaller report, page three, is, is our single audit. When a government entity spends more than $750,000 in grant awards, either for federal and state separately, we have to do more audits on top of the financial statement audit. So for this year, we actually did, added two more. We did one for federal awards and another for state awards. But in our opinion, the county complied in all material respects with those type of compliance requirements referred to as uniform guidance and the state of Texas grant management standards. So we didn't find any issues in those as well. With the programs we specifically tested for federal, they're on page six and seven is the schedule, federal and state awards. Federal on page six and the state awards on page seven. So there was the coronavirus, state and local fiscal recovery funds that were being finished up. There was still about 2.6 million left to be spent, which was spent last year, that we tested, as well as Senate Bill 22 on the state side for the rural law enforcement that counties are getting those extra funds for. And there's actually on page nine, when we do these single audits, there's a rundown on page, on page nine, that just lists auditors' opinions, what we tested, and if there was any material weaknesses, that sort of thing. And it's a one-page cheat sheet, shows up at the top, the financial statements. We gave, we gave an unmodified opinion, there were no material weaknesses, no deficiencies in internal control. And then for federal and state awards, the same thing, we're giving an unmodified opinion on the schedule of expenditures, state and federal awards. We found no issues specific to those grant programs that we tested. So congratulations on those. The other quick thing I wanted to highlight, in the statements themselves, in the big financials that we audited, you'll see, so there's different types of, of statements that are in here, some are on, for governments to use what's called a modified accrual approach. And then several years ago, they wanted other additional statements, which are on a full accrual. So the modified accrual ones are based on how y'all budget. There's near-term, short-term focus within a year. Those start on page 13, there's a balance sheet for that, and then the income statement for those funds. General Fund, Road and Bridge, Capital Projects, Debt Service Fund, they're all on, starting on page 13, 14, and then 16 and 17 is the income statement. But you'll see on page 13 for your general fund, down towards the bottom, the total fund balance, you've got $25 million in equity, basically. It's assets, less than liabilities you have at year-end. Just for your general fund, there's 25 million. There was, some of that is, was unassigned, basically what was budgeted for the coming fiscal year is expected to decrease that equity. And then, what we normally do is we take that number and compare it to page 16, the total expenditures in the general fund. 56.6 million in expenditures each year, that's roughly gonna be the same. So we compare that to that ending fund balance of 25 million. So just as a rule of thumb, if you don't bring any money in going forward, how long is that equity gonna get you? And so we compare that to the expenditures, that's roughly five months, which is a healthy, a healthy spot to be in.
Good.
I think two to three, three, four, just depends on what, on preferences, but that's generally where you wanna be. Not too much in, in fund balance and not too little.
Okay.
Go to the lots.
Just right. And then, so the other, the last letter is just that communication letter. You've probably seen them before from other auditors. It's boilerplate stuff, it just lays out our responsibility as auditors, like management responsibility, because we're required to maintain our independence as well. And that's, that's there for y'all to look over. But if y'all had any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer those to the best of my ability, or ask, John Manning is the partner over this, this audit, so either him or I can get back to you if I mess up.
So we are healthy and we follow generally accepted accounting principles.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gott, appreciate everything. All right. Y'all have any questions? Anybody?
So is there, are there any smaller areas for follow-ups, for improvements, that y'all made any recommendations on?
I think just kind of, well, what we do our first week, when we come out, we have a planning week, either an interim work or the first week after you're in, where we'll come through each department and we'll look at those internal controls and say, and general, generally, we're focused on, okay, what's, we want controls to fix or catch the big stuff, but we don't wanna see like big instances of fraud, so we can rely on those controls to some extent for the financial statements, because we can't audit every little, little thing. But during those, we might reference, you know, say to whoever's there, I'll make sure keep the lock safe, the lock, the safe locked, drawers locked, yeah, that sort of thing. But we will continue to, to mention those little things to whoever we come in contact with.
So there are some continuous improvement steps that are outlined in this document.
Oh, yeah.
I'm most surprised, I mean, it's, the Auditor's Office, congratulations, it's a very tight orifice to get through when you're trying to buy things.
Yes. It's a good...
No, 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 no.
If you're, if you're experiencing that, that's generally how government's supposed to work, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not surprised at all because, congratulations, Dwayne, and, and your team.
Yeah.
They do, yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you so much. And how you spell your last name again, Cameron?
Aaron, A-A-R-O-N.
Okay, okay. Just in case Shelby needed that, because, all right. All right, thank you so much, appreciate you.
Congratulations. Congrats to you.
Yeah, you did bang me, but I need pain, so I'm, I'm okay, yeah. Again, thank y'all, that was enlightening. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda, first item is information only, and just we're asked the sheriff how the repairs coming, and that's all, I was kinda curious to know is, we're still on track pretty well, Sheriff, at the jail?
Yes, sir, Judge, thank you. We met last time, the commission had us for 12 deficiencies, four of those have been answered, remedy, we still have eight deficiencies, we're working on, hopefully after Commissioners' Court today, we can arrest, start working on those deficiencies, we'll see how that comes out, but just to let you know, our maintenance crew's been working seven days a week alongside the vendor that's putting in the intercoms, and we'll install the things. We got about 60% of the intercoms installed at this time today. There's a separate team of three people from that vendor that'll be there to work on the security control systems. Our, as I said, our maintenance crews have been working seven days a week, and they're helping with the installation of the intercoms, but also they've been able to repair all the showers, catch and fix the busted pipe that was leaking, they found, and before causing it considerable damage, they got it. Our freezer's gone out again, Dayton Electric was there yesterday, it was frozen up, they couldn't work on it. Commissioner Krabowski opened up the Hardtail building, we got our frozen food in that that right now. Hopefully, it gets fixed and we can get it out of the Hardtail building back, but Dayton Electric will be there with the part today, they believe we'll fix it. Our fire restoration, we can't get the repairs done until we see what happens with the expanded metal request today on the agenda.
Yeah.
The compact metal has to go first, and then we can start doing the fire restoration. The JK LM dorms have all been painted, they're ready to go when we get the locks and the other stuff, lighting's been done. Fire troll came out and inspected the water lines and the sprinkler systems yesterday, and we're waiting on that report. Siemens, who has the fire panel, is there this morning reviewing, a lot of the deficiencies on the fire panel are because of the fire that was done, and when we get that restored, and I know our fire marshal can speak better on the panel than I can, but supposedly those deficiencies will go away when they start taking them out, correct?
Correct, because they get the smoke detectors in and programmed and identified, and those probable disappear as the device is installed.
We're currently getting a quote from a company called Allied Fire Service to replace the fire hoses in the jail, they've all, are expired. And then the HVAC system, we're gonna, a couple of people that we've had, that our vendors could look at it, we're requesting another vendor be approved, and as soon as they get approved, then they'll walk through and tell us what it will take to do that. Any question, questions?
We're good. Thank you. Thanks, Sheriff. And there is no action needed on this item, because it was information only. Okay, number eight, two. Sheriff, don't sit down yet, this one's for you.
Jay.
Consider and approve designating Sheriff Bobby Rader as the local rabies. Somebody say so?
Me, it's Lee. On the prior ones, we have done a motion to accept the report.
I can't hear.
On the prior meetings, we have done a motion to accept the report from the sheriff.
I can't understand what she's saying.
We need a motion to accept the report from the sheriff.
You make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion from Gerald. Second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. And it is accepted, Sheriff, there you go. Now I'll get back talking about rabies, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Judge, I have been the rabies representative since I have been the sheriff. Apparently they expire, and they just need an updated application. I'm listed as the one that's responsible for it, all the documents that come, the county come through the sheriff's office, and so I'm responsible, it's just that the state, the Department of Health and Services, needs an updated form signed by you, that I'm still okay to do it.
I'm good with that.
All right, motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Number eight, three's from me. Consider and approve the request from the Liberty County Housing Authority for the appointment of a new commissioner to the Liberty County Housing Authority Board. Number on the board should be five, to be in accordance with the law. We had someone that recently left, so all this is, is to put it out there for y'all to be looking for somebody to serve on the Housing Authority Board. We don't have any names yet, this is, that's why we put it on the agenda today, at least let the public know that we're looking for someone to serve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. The next one, South, well, from me, the Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation. Consider and approve resolution assignment of private activity bond authority to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs and containing other provisions relating to the subject. Y'all got, should've received the letter with this that explains what they're requesting. Are there any, any questions about it? So if y'all want to approve the resolution, then I'm gonna need a motion and a second. Motion from Bruce. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, five, from Mr. Brown. Consider and approve erroneous refund to Ivan and Gladys, worked pertaining to account number 69484 for customer David Paul Girth. This one was a take no action, I believe on this one, it was erroneous, but what's your take on that one, Catherine?
Well, Judge, my question is, when they say erroneous refund, did we, did we give the refund? Did we actually follow through and, and give the funds to, to Mr. Girth? I would need to know more information.
Yep.
Because at that point, are we trying to obtain them back? Are we giving him credit? And I believe that these are questions that Mr. Brown probably should answer.
Yeah, it's a little bit vague to be. I would ask if we take no action, that way we...
I would table it.
Let's table, okay.
Yeah, I would table it.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from David to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, six, from Mr. Brown. Consider and approve imposition of optional fees for calendar year 2026 for the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles, and we do this every year, I think it's, was it still a $10 fee?
Split. The process of...
Yeah, yeah.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, seven, from our tax attorneys over at Linebarger. Consider and approve the following resale bids. G Rincon property ID is 56485, bid amount's $3,500. And number two is A Alum, property ID is 37299, bid amount $33,384.
Approve both of these, and we're receiving over, over 40% back on our, on money, and I recommend to make a motion to approve both of these.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David. To approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, eight, from Mr. A.J. Johnson over in the Office of Emergency Management. Consider and approve a resolution of Liberty County adopting the Liberty County Hazard Mitigation Plan 2025 update. The plan can be found on the following HGAC link. It's also 357 pages, so I didn't print out the whole report to include your packet, but A.J.
Yes, sir.
You have anything you wanna add to this?
Yes, sir. It's a plan that, well, we've been adopted since 2006, Liberty County. It's a plan for FEMA and TDN, Texas Division of Emergency Management, and also HGAC.
Right.
Been working on, and it helps us get funding after this plan in place. We have to update our plan every five years, so this is...
Time to update.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Court have any questions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, A.J., appreciate you getting that tidied up and ready to send back in.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Number eight, nine, from Mr. Dennis over in the IT Department. Consider and approve a bid from Trinity Valley HVAC Services LLC for commercial-grade mini-split condensers, thermostats, control wiring, and, let's see, four condensation pumps, thermostat modules, removal of the old units for the IT rooms at the sheriff's office for temperature control issues, in the amount of $40,000. We gotta keep that equipment cool.
Let me give you a rundown of what's going on.
Okay.
First, I didn't come here for money, okay? Just told to put it on the Commissioners Court to see if we can get this discussion going.
Yeah.
This started back in February of last year. What I determined is, the new crack units at our sheriff's office in our server room, what's happening is, when the building loses city power, the system doesn't know that it's transitioned over to generator.
Generator, yeah.
So the brains of the operation and all the alert systems that I set up isn't sending anything, because it thinks it's still on. What's happening is the crack units never start back up. So the first time I got this is I got an alert from our critical systems that we run over their sheriff's office, thermal shutdown. So I ran up there, room was 102 degrees, because it's a locked room, it's insulated. So I was like, okay, was able to restart those by manually flipping the breaker on the units, got them back up. Couple, I don't know, maybe a month later, same issue, around 1:00 in the morning, ran up there, room was like 99 degrees, cranked it again. So I bought an aftermarket little thermal sensor from Amazon that would send me a push notification when the room got hot, because I couldn't trust the system. And I reached out to vendor and they're like, no, everything's fine. I was like, okay. So around October 31st is when I started reporting issues to maintenance. David and those guys have been great, they've been trying to do what they can, trying David and those guys have been great. They've been trying to do what they can, trying to get different vendors out there, trying to get these issues resolved. One would come out and say, oh, we need a heat pump. Another one, we'd wait on that. Another one would come out and say, oh, it's the outside unit. Constant, constant. They would patch it. It would work for about a day or two. Go back down, go back down. So as it stands, the last report we had was around May nineteenth. The room at the sheriff's office, I've had to keep the door open, which is a security issue one. But I have two box fans literally keeping the room at right around eighty-one degrees. You cannot shut that door because they will just heat up that entire room. Now, is it within the safe realms of servers? Yes, but over extended period of time, no. Because unfortunately, your lifespan goes in half. You have potential for data loss. That's one of our redundant backups for all our systems here offsite. So basically brought this to Commissioner's Court is we've kind of exhausted all options. And I believe David got a quote to get a retrofit, to get many splits put in there and yank the other ones out because they just, no one can fix them. So I'm just here to ask, what can we do? And it may have to be addressed whenever we can, but it's, the longer we wait, it's just going to prolong the issues.
It's been, it's been a rough and hot summer.
Yeah.
We have exhausted our money that we have set aside for these projects. Is there any way this can last for another month and a half until our new budget comes in? And at that time, I can we should have the funding then. I mean, it's
I mean, if I can, if I can keep, if we can keep this right there, I don't recommend it, but we gotta do what we gotta do. Will it hold? I have good faith that we probably can make it. But then again, you know, I don't know. I just wanted to bring to attention because I mean, we have to address it. Because it's not systems I can just pull out. It's got C just requirements, asking how, like, there's lots of that there. So when we can address it, we need to address it sooner than later.
So you said we're not following our protocol, putting these box fans in there.
Well, I tried to buy the best box fans.
So what's our risk and then what are our consequences?
Uh, basically, if, I mean, we have any potential for data loss. I mean, we have potential for CAT or RMS systems to go down due to overheating. Parts degrade. It's just, you're sandwiched in a rack. I mean, it has to have proper airflow, it has to have cool airflow. I mean, it's just, it's like overheating your car. Your radiator goes, your Yeah. It's made it this, I mean, we've managed and I monitor it every day. There is a little bit of performance degradation because the CPUs are having to run hotter. So you're not getting the full performance of the servers. We're good. It's just heat is the enemy, no matter how you look at it.
What concerns me with the price and that we probably need to go out for bids.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I think that's one of the first
And I think that time that you do all that and get with maintenance and let's go through that, we're going to be looking at October one anyway.
Absolutely. I think so as well. Yeah, I think we've just exhausted our options with what they've sent out.
Follow the control system we have in place. It's going to take at least that long.
Oh, yeah. It's so, it's so smart over there. But it's, I mean, we just
We got an A plus, right?
There you go.
I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, yes, that was the first bid that I believe David got and stuff. So I'm not opposed to whatever we need to do, but
Let's go out for some more bids and get into purchasing. That way we're set for October one. We can go with this with the new budget. Gone with it.
We can make it.
Okay.
But that was it.
Request table.
Make a motion. It sounds like Bruce, um, suggested that maybe we get additional quotes. Call for bids. If that's something the court wishes to do, you could make that motion.
Good.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh, we need to go out for bids on this and to, uh, bring it back to court with bids through purchasing agents and be funded from our new budget.
So is it going to be allowed in the new budget to fund this since it's a, it's a building?
We have departments, special projects, waiting to prepare. That'll be replenished October first.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's hard to say. It's a fairly significant expense on the first day of the new budget year. It's kind of, that's, that's all I'm saying.
I would rather, I would rather prepare now for the new budget to know what we're looking at.
And I've, I've tried to look at, you know, portable options, stuff like that, but the way the room's built and everything, there, you can't, you know, we can't punch a hole through the tilt wall.
No, no.
So even just like a portable AC unit, you'd have to change the pan and everything. It's, it's not feasible. So we're hovering right where we're in the area, but just wanting to go, so no, if anything does go down, most likely due to the
All right, got a motion from Bruce to go out for bids and be ready for the new budget to make a decision. Do I have a second?
Nay.
Second from David. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Nick. That motion does carry. Thank you. Number eight ten from me is consider and approve Judge Knight's signature on the tribal letters for the drainage improvement project in Liberty County, taking place approximately thirty-three hundred feet downstream of Martin Luther King Road and approximately six hundred feet upstream, uh, off of FM one sixty. So that'd be over in the Ames area. And all this is, um, W, WCID five is probably, I believe that's the entity that's going to be doing this, uh, improvement. In other words, just cleaning out ditches, okay? And evidently, the tribal letters for the drainage improvement project, um, Catherine, help me here. They have a, I guess, in case we dig up artifacts or whatever.
It seems that way. You know, there's certainly, um, that possibility. You know, as it is not our property.
Right.
They have the right to, to say no in participating. And if, and if they do, then, um, I believe that affects the overall
Yeah.
plan. But, uh, I believe that these letters are something that are typical with this type of project.
We, we've done this before, so, yeah.
Exactly. Um, and, and this is notice to, to the tribes that have participating land. It certainly, um, you know, behooves the court to, to approve this item. And of course, when Judge Knight's signature is required on any document, I always say, let's take it to court.
We will, yeah.
The only question I had is who pays for this project?
If it's WCID five, then it will be that entity. They are taxing entity.
To my understanding, it is not the county.
Okay. All right. Well, let's say the court.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Gerald, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight eleven from Sheriff. Consider and approve using the commissary fund for the electronic monitoring of inmates. This will greatly benefit the inmates by improving safety and security, enhancing the monitoring of vulnerable inmates, and has potential for increasing the efficiency of staff. Total cost is thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Sheriff?
Yes, sir, Judge. This is an inmate tracking observation system they have. This includes the server, the software, the hardware, all the stuff Nick knows about, I don't know about. But, uh, the COs will have handheld devices that they will go, the inmates will have a wristband or a card to wear. If they don't want the wristband, we hope they take, but they'll have a card and they can check their account for it. And it's just, uh, also records how often they've been by the cell. As you know, there's some of them that were part of thirty-minute checks.
Yeah.
This will take care of all that. And we do have the money in the commissary fund to pay for it. I just need y'all's authorization to spend it.
Dwayne, is that okay?
So
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from David to approve. Greg, you want to make the second?
I did have a question.
Yeah, but just one minute. You want to make the second? David had the, okay. Okay. All right, now further discussion. Gerald?
The question I had is, you know, I saw this, I read through there and it makes perfect sense. It's really more of an audit question. Why wouldn't this be in the budget amendment section of the consent agenda? They're, they're pulling some funds and is it
The commissary, the commissary fund is under his control.
Okay.
He's got, he's got his own stamp of all bank accounts for it. And actually, I'm telling myself.
Yeah, the auditor is gone.
The, the sheriff has control of the commissary fund. And every county in the state of Texas, except a county that is adjacent to a county with a population of two and a half million people. He's got to put it forward to Commissioner's Court because they got that bracket in there. That's something we just found out about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And to answer another part of your question, Mr. Goff and the judge worked real good if we requested in the next budget. But this just came up because of all the damage and the
Okay.
red light for that.
Okay, again, I just thought it, it looked, it appeared to me to be something that could just go through the consent agenda and the budget amendment. That's my only question.
All right, we have a motion from David, the second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion now? All right, hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twelve from me is discuss the progress of the construction of the Northwest Annex Project, including space allocations for county departments. Jim Snyder, you're here today. You want to give us a, you come on up, get, give us an update and let us know where we're looking, how we're looking.
I'm not looking too good, but the annex is looking great.
Yeah, okay.
I was there yesterday. They started the punch list. We anticipate having the formal punch list done on August twenty-fifth, which is coming up here in about ten days. Um, I've talked to Kenny Burns about coming in with the, with the Chief Knox to go do a punch list for the county and the architect. That'll be done on the twenty-fifth as well. We think we'll ask for a substantial completion certificate for the twenty-fifth with anticipating you all moving in, I think I heard yesterday, September ninth.
Yeah. Sound about right, Sheriff? Okay. Sounds good to me.
That's our court for today, and I'm not getting any answers.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you, Jim. Sheriff, how many office spaces you have out there?
Yeah, twelve working out there, ten of them contract, two of them play out there.
See, a twelve people working. How many offices do you have in this?
Because that's the total assigned areas. You know, there's four shifts that work that, so we'll have two to three working a shift.
Right.
But the total amount of people that we have usually in there, uh, that we try to allot is twelve for that area.
Right, okay.
And this was built basically for the sheriff's department and mainly our permit department.
Right.
Out there. Is there any other offices that are going to be out there? I know at one time we was going to, we wanted an office for the tax, but
Yeah. We, we did give the, uh, the constable an office space out there, so they'd have a presence. But he only has two deputies that work in the MMD area. So this was just so everybody have a, a place to, to work on reports and such. And you'd have a space there, I think. Uh, there's a area there to
Addiction team will also use it because there's a garage and they could take a vehicle in to look for common abandoned stuff out there also.
Right. Okay. And you have a place where you can drive into a garage and tear a car apart, right? Yeah, okay. And it'll all be, that will be shared. I mean, if the, the constable has anything he needs, he, he can use the garage, you know, and, okay. But, you know, we're going, we'll share it as best we can until we can afford to build another one that would probably let this one encompass all law enforcement. If we build a new one, it would take in permitting and the tax office, all in one. It's down the road, way down the road, but yet we, we will consider it at some time. All right, um. Motion from Bruce, take no action.
I'll second.
Second from Gerald. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight thirteen from Ms. McCarty. Consider and approve Texas Emissions Reduction Plan Rebate Grants Program Contract between Liberty County Road and Bridge Precinct One and TCEQ for the purpose of providing financial assistance for emissions reduction projects as authorized by the Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter three eighty-six. Catherine, that's a whole lot of words.
It is, but it's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, this was brought to me by Commissioner Korbowski. Um, this is a method of obtaining some grant funds through, um, TCEQ. I think the, the
Terps.
Yes.
It's, it's Terps. People know it as, uh, for farm equipment, uh, ag, construction equipment. I've got three old pieces of equipment that they're going to give me three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars to replace, and that's what we're going to do.
So we'd ask that you approve.
What a deal. Okay.
I guess no one else has any of those Terps. I know that's a monthly year cycle to get that approved, and so congratulations.
Yeah, it's taken me two years working on this one here.
All right, well, let's say the court.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Gerald. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fourteen, eight fourteen from, uh, County Attorney's Office. Consider and approve TREC Unimproved Property Contract between Liberty County and Charles L. McGuire for the purchase of Lot Number Three, Interblock Twenty-three, Tax Tracked Lots Four, Seven, and Eight in Liberty County, Texas for seventy-two thousand dollars. Catherine?
Yes, so all this is, is just the standard Texas Real Estate Commission, uh, unimproved property contract for, to enter into, uh, a potential purchase of a strip of land in between the Tarver Building, which we just purchased, so I guess now it's a county building.
Yeah.
And, um, the old Kayshawn Building.
Which we own too.
Which we now own too. So that would give us all the property to potentially improve for parking, that kind of thing. However, I will say that this purchase, the proceeds to pay for this purchase do need to come out of the next fiscal year. And so, um, no monies will be approved today. I believe that you can go forward and approve, uh, the property contract, but we will have to come back in the new fiscal year to approve, uh, the final price.
Basically, what we're trying to do is lock this in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, and, but just going to be funded from our
I mean, the primary part of the purchasing would go away if you didn't
Yeah, exactly.
buy this.
Yeah.
But then we're going to have to build a real parking lot because it's more or less gravel and grass, right?
I plan on building a real parking lot.
Well, there is gravel under the grass. How about that? All right, so let's say the court. Got a motion from Greg to approve.
Second.
Second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Number fifteen will be an executive session item, so I'm going to go past it for right now. Let's go to item number sixteen from Commissioner Clark. Consider and approve of Natural Gas Pipeline Company of America LLC Road Use Agreement with Precinct Three and Precinct Four and accompanying road use bond. Attached is the road use agreement and permit bond haul route agreement with signatures. Gerald?
This is, this is both Commissioner Whitmire's and I, uh, agreement. We do have a representative from the pipeline today if she wants to come forward and tell us what y'all are going to do.
Yeah, come on up.
I think this Natural Gas Pipeline Company of America is a subsidiary of Kinder Morgan or some, there's some attachment to Kinder Morgan. We're just not familiar with that name.
If you tap your
And they submitted a great deal of, uh, the documentation, uh, road use agreement, the, the bonding and all. And it's gone through the, uh, the county attorney's office, and if they take no exception to what's on there, then I wouldn't unless Commissioner Whitmire had the shot.
Yeah, uh, Natural Gas Pipeline Company of America is a subsidiary of Kinder Morgan.
Let me get your name first.
Oh, sorry, Shanda Austin.
Shanda Austin.
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, we have the, we have two lines that cross through this area of Liberty County. Line, we call them Texas LA Line One and Line Two. We're going to be replacing, uh, portions of Texas LA Line One. And that is due to the growth in the area. The line has to do a class upgrade. So we're just getting a thicker wall pipe, making sure that the integrity is better for the, the maintenance and running of the pipe and also for the county. So, um, we are requesting So we are requesting today to use the county roads in order to facilitate the construction.
Okay. Catherine? Anything to add to it?
Just that I have reviewed these. I believe Melinda's office has as well. We would ask that you approve.
And on the drainage ditch, make sure you clean those, keep them cleaned out.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, our part of it, we rode with the contractor. We do have a video of all the road conditions. It's really not touching in Precinct Four. It's not touching that many of the county roads. It lists County Road Six Eight Six, but that's actually FM Six Eight Six. And there, that's okay. I'm just saying, if you look at it, you think there's quite a few miles of county road, but there are main access points in Precinct Four, County Road Six Seven Six. And again, there's just not a lot of going to be tracked, nothing like the Bahia Pipeline that's going through the area now that's just creating lots of havoc, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from David. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. So what do I do next with the road use agreement? Do I pick it up before I leave, or do I come back? Do I get a copy?
Well, it just depends if, do you want to buy me a new ink pen that'll work? Yeah, we'll have to sign the road use agreement and then forward it to you, and that'll be going through Catherine's office.
Okay.
Mighty fine. Got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Numbers eight seventeen, Mr. C.
Yes.
Aggie football season is upon us. Yeah. It is. Consider an approved payment application number twelve from White Construction in the amount of $448,692.20 for the Northwest Annex Project.
Yeah, after this payment, we'll have 545. See the end of it.
Yep. All right. Let's say the court.
Second.
Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for, call for vote? All in favor? Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And again, this is ARPA funds that are paying for this. Yeah. Okay. It's, in essence, it's taxpayer funding, but it's federal taxpayer funding, not local, totally local. Okay?
It's that money that just increased the deficit.
That's exactly right, yeah. Whatever other trigon we're on right now. Okay. Number eight eighteen, Mr. C. Considering approved the lease purchase of a mini hydraulic excavator from Mustang Cat through Sourcewell, contract number 011723-CAT for $168,139.49 and a finance proposal from Caterpillar Finance Services Corporation for Precinct Number One. Harold?
Now, the reason, the reason we're going this route is this also involves the Terps. This machine will end up costing the county $39,000, and that's it. But I have to purchase this first before I can get my money from Terps to refund this. So a lease purchase will get it without the county having to pay the full amount.
That's a pretty good horse trade in there, Bruce.
Yes, it is.
Make a motion.
Motion from David, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight nineteen from Mr. C. Considering approved the transfer of asset number 4012, which is a chip spreader from Precinct One to Precinct Four. So Gerald, are you going to pick up some?
Yeah, I'm going to help fund Bruce's mini excavator.
Yeah. I got you. That said, $39,000 is going to cover that.
It's more than that.
More of our hard horse trade.
But yes, we're wheeling and dealing. I mean, the one that Precinct Four has now that I believe Fred Flintstone operated in his early years. So this is trying to bring us up a little bit to something with electronics and do a better job preparing some works.
All righty.
Make a motion.
Motion from David. Looking for a second. There it is, Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty from Mr. C. Considering approved the purchase of two new Tahos in the amount of $105,510 from Parkway Chevrolet through TIPS contract number 7240901 for the sheriff's office. Yes, sir. Yeah, come on up, Mr. Hendrick.
Looking at the agenda, and it should have been Lake Country Chevrolet instead of.
Lake, okay.
The TIPS is correct. Everything else is correct.
Okay. Catherine, is it okay to change?
I respect your motion, that amendment, my motion.
Guys, I'm having trouble hearing. What was the like, the mics aren't on or something? What was it about like?
I can't understand a word.
I would just, to repeat, I would just, when you make your motion, make that amendment.
The Lake Chevrolet.
Correct.
Make a motion to approve purchase from Lake Chevrolet.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from David. To buy the sheriff some new Tahos.
Ms. Chambers, do you have your microphone on?
Yes, I do, but it's, it's the one in the computer, and it's not very good. I apologize.
Okay. Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-one from Sheriff. Considering approved interlocal agreement between Harden ISD and Liberty County Sheriff's Department for One School Resource Officer the 2025-2026 school year. Sheriff?
Judge and commissioners, this is a renewal of the resource officer we have out there. The adjustments to contract, I believe, have been approved by Catherine and released over there. It's just addressing increase, projected increases salary that we're.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from David.
Judge.
Ma'am.
If I may interject, my apologies. Harden has not yet executed this agreement. I believe their next school board meeting is the 18th. So I would ask that you approve this item with the condition that it also be approved by the Harden School Board with no material changes.
David, you, yeah, you amend your motion to reflect that, okay? All right. Got a motion from David, second from Greg, on the amended motion. Shelby, you get all that? You got that shorthand going, baby? Okay. All right, any further discussion?
I had some questions. I'm sorry. So I looked at the workup sheet. It didn't include anything about auto expenses. So do they, do they, are they using county vehicles?
Yes, sir, we use county.
Because that wasn't part of the workup, and so when you look at, you know, kind of overall expense, and I was looking at the, the health insurance and the, and it looked like the health insurance was considerably lower than, than a family coverage. So is that, is that by the individuals who are named?
Correct.
They're, they're.
Yes.
Those are the exact ones for that, those individuals. And then the last one is, you know, school resource officers have a great deal of training. So who's responsible for that training?
Sheriff's. Sheriff's Department. It's mandatory, Commissioner, that all law enforcement officers have these, the training for the alert and other classes they have. The school resource officers, that's specific. We actually teach some of those classes that are there, but yes, it is responsibility to sheriff's office or the constable's office to make sure that they get the education.
And then finally, the last thing is, to me, there's a certain amount of liability associated with providing this service to the school, because if you look at some of the things that have been in the news recently, there's lots of lawsuits. So when you look through the eyes or the lens of the plaintiff's attorneys, I mean, what, are we exposing ourselves to anything here that's unnecessary?
So the way that these contracts read, there are pretty clear indemnification clauses in, in the contracts themselves. Each deputy, either sheriff or constable, is under the full care and custody and control of either the sheriff and his department or the constable and their departments, right? They do not take direction from the school. Okay, so they are deemed an agent and employee of the county, not the school.
Then the big one that came out again, it was, whenever there's an incident, say if there's something happens at one of the schools that we're providing this service for, who takes ownership, responsibility of incident management?
That would be the school.
Well, because that was one of the big things. Nobody knew who was in charge. Everybody was doing this.
That would be the school. So SRO officers, they only act in their capacity as law enforcement officers when the school asks for it. They're there to kind of keep the peace, but any investigations or law enforcement type assistance that they provide is done after administration says, hey, we need you to assist, right? They can't just start an investigation on their own. Everything is handled administratively until they bring that SRO in.
To answer your question, if there's an active shooter deal, the first officer on scene will be the incident commander, emergency management. If it comes, we'll delegate authority, but the first person on scene, law enforcement officer, if there's an active shooter, will take over incident command, and then it should, we've been practicing that.
And then that officer during, when the school year is not in, they work for you?
That's correct.
So that's how he.
Yes, sir.
Earned the rest of the year.
Yes, sir. I know, I talked with the Devers SRO deputy, and he works traffic quite a bit. He had a lot of citations for speeding to the school zone and other stuff that they have. Yes, he is under my direction, and he does patrol, but after school is out and even on holidays, they will come and work for the sheriff.
So we do have some indemnification in the event?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. All right. We got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item eight twenty-two from Sheriff is considered approved. Interlocal agreement between Devers ISD and Liberty County Sheriff's Department for One School Resource Officer for the 2025-2026 school year. So that's going to be.
Same, same condition.
Same thing, okay. Let's say the court.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Gerald. Anybody want a second? Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate it. Number eight twenty-three from Ms. Soliday. Consider with possible approval of Sterling Parkway Street Dedication and Reserves Phase Two of Preliminary Plant. Attached in the packet is LJA Engineering's Letter of Approval. Now, this is through Sterling Tradition Development.
Yes, it's a little bit different because we usually don't do the street dedications until we do the final flats, but they want them to get all these taken care of.
Yeah.
That's why it's on there.
Catherine, any problem with that? Nope.
No, Judge.
Let's say the court.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There you go. Motion from Gerald, second from Bruce. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-four from Ms. Soliday. Consider possible approval of Sterling Parkway Street Dedication and Reserve Phase Three Preliminary Plant. Attached in the packet is a letter of approval from LJA Engineering. Basically the same principle here is applied.
Yes, sir.
Let's say the court.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Gerald, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-five from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve Frontier Waste Solutions Construction Plans and Drainage Plans. Attached in the packet is a letter of approval from LJA Engineering. TextDOT has also issued a letter stating that the drainage review satisfies TextDOT requirements. This is on Frontier Waste New Location.
Basically, you know, their location on 1960, they're expanding.
Yeah, okay.
They need it because all the trucks were pretty much parked right up to the end of the road. So they've been working on expanding it, so they have room for all of their trucks, and that's it.
Do we know what they're building, though?
Yeah.
We have a representative from Frontier.
You want to ease up? Tell us what you got?
I don't know a lot of the drains, but what we're building is a two-story.
Come on up a little bit so we can hear you, okay? The whole world wants to see you.
What we're building is a two-story office and shop complex.
Okay, would you give Shelby your name, please, say what she?
Dave Holby.
Okay. Office and a shop. Okay? And more parking space, probably.
And a lot more.
Okay.
Yeah, we've required the land around us, so we're slowly moving it out.
So we're now granting them a permit to begin construction? Is that, is that what this is?
Basically, the construction plans are for an expansion. They already exist there, and they'll be going through all the plans with LJA and TextDOT requirements for, there's a small spot in there that, there was a, I guess, an old drainage pond type thing that had to be looked through and make sure that it wasn't going to flood anybody and take care of all that first before any of the documents can be finalized.
Looks like they already started construction a while back.
Well, they already own the property, and they've already there, basically, I'm sorry. Basically, all they were doing is they're clearly not getting ready for the construction. They had to go through the last process for TextDOT's approval and then our approval as well for the new building. And like I said, it's going to be, like you said, a two-story office building with a lot more parking. They are seriously looking into the parking facilities where they're at right now.
Because I'd heard rumor that they may be building some type of trash compaction.
That, they're talking about that, but that's not what this is right now. That's.
Yeah, that's a separate phase.
That's a separate phase, and they haven't begun that.
That would, that would be a cause for concern.
Well, and that would also have to go through TC.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from David to approve, looking for a second.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's see, Melinda, number eight twenty-six. Consider and approve change order number two in the amount of $84,553.14 making the revised total contract $1,283,414.59 for the Ames Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project Service from Schaumburg &amp; Polk Incorporated using ARPA funds. Attached to the packet is a change order from, with Mayor Domain's signature.
Yes, sir. Did I? I don't think, she does, she has, she gives the email as well. It's going up.
Yeah, it looks like it's going up. Yeah, because I mean, I was just looking at.
Okay.
I was just looking at that as far as.
Yeah, and we've got another ARPA meeting Thursday? Yes. To find out what's going on. All right, we need to table it.
I would say so.
Make a motion to table.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from David. Table? Any further discussion? Hearing none? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. One more, Melinda, eight twenty-seven. Consider and approve Lima Materials Sand and Gravel Quarry No Rise Certificate. The final review has been completed. Attached in the pack, in the packet is LJA Engineering's Letter of No Objection. And you have anything you want to add to this? It looks pretty straightforward.
Luckily, we got this one at the very beginning, so we didn't have to go around and around and around with them. This is off of County Road 2164 and Precinct Two. Okay. For some reason, CAD has it under Precinct One, but it's actually Precinct Two.
Yeah.
You see any problem with it?
You see any problem with it?
No. Question I have is though, the other ones that we approved, they all had structures that were going up. They required FEMA, TCEQ, Texas Parks and Wildlife and all those other.
All they have out there is equipment.
Okay, so. I, I read through that and then they, they submitted some kind of EAP for if, if Mr. Johnson gives a notification that the river's on the rise, that they get their equipment out. So. Anyway, so that one's significantly different than the, than the other one. So they, they're, they're not planning on putting anything in the ground, not even an electrical power pole?
No, not to my knowledge, not yet.
So can we monitor that? Because it looks like this one's significantly different than the others.
Yes, absolutely.
So. I don't understand. No, no, I understand. I'm just saying. This one looks, it looks a lot different.
It does look as though if they get the call from AJ's office, that they have enough time to get all of their equipment, so it doesn't cause any excess flooding.
They have no representation here today?
I don't think so, no. I don't think so. No, sir.
I, I'd certainly like to hear more about that myself. How they're gonna, how they're gonna manage that. That's just me. I mean, I'm not, I can't make a decision on my own, but I'm just saying I have a little cause for concern there because it looks so different than the other ones that we, we just recently approved.
They, they just, they have to move and change the location.
I think it's coming from, I, I'm, that I'm not sure. But, I mean, you know more. I didn't have any contact with people at the very beginning.
So Greg, they've already been doing business there and just moving locations?
Not that location, but now Southwood, now Forest Area.
Okay, and so they have no permanent facilities there? The one that they're.
They moved everything from that location where they were. They have temporary buildings and temporary stuff.
Everything that can be mobile. Everything's mobile. Everything can be moved.
It's on wheels?
I mean, all of the, any of the building down there, they're like those office, kind of like the office traders, right?
Well, you got, you got, you got scale out there.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm quite familiar with sanding gravel pits and basically even the conveyor belts are on wheels. They can put onto them and roll them out of there.
Right.
Okay, like I say, my, when I read through here, saying this is, this is different.
Yeah, there's no permanent or no buildings being constructed, so. Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David. To approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Appreciate you, Melinda. Number eight twenty-eight from Mr. Johnson over in the emergency management office. Consider and approve a fifteen hundred dollar donation from Saint Stephen's Episcopal Church to the emergency management office to be earmarked for food and supplies to aid first responders for local events. Bruce, self-explanatory. AJ?
Yes, sir. I received a phone call about two weeks ago. I talked to Catherine about it. And I want to create an account, probably with First Liberty and have the account for his other folks to call. Also, I'm gonna make donations for, for first responders in need. And so I want to make sure I have ticks and balances also. Keep Knox and I both signatures before you, any type of transition, we done with the phones.
Make a motion. You okay with that?
They're getting a donation, okay?
Getting free money.
Then it'll be, it'll be in an account at what bank?
First, uh, First Liberty.
Okay.
Officer Emergency Management. There's a new account. I'll take your word for it. I'll take your word, I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, sorry AJ, but you don't get a commissary fund like the sheriff's got.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll second that motion.
Would be nice.
Was that you, David? Motion to accept from David, second from Bruce. And we'll divvy out AJ's food and supply fund. Any further discussion?
We're gonna send it to Saint Stephen's to thank you for this.
Yeah, we sure will. Yeah. Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-nine from Ms. McCarty. Consider and approve fire restoration quote for damages at the Liberty County Jail by Cotton Global Disaster Solutions to be paid by insurance. Okay, Catherine, how you? Give us a little bit of enlightenment here?
Judge, if you recall, Cotton is the company that insurance has provided to do the work to the damaged, the fire damaged area to the jail. I believe this quote is for the expanded metal. No, it's not. The, okay, it's for fire repairs. I'm under the impression that this is to be paid by insurance. I'm not sure if that's via reimbursement to the county. No, it's not. Can you speak a little bit more on this, Sheriff? I apologize. I'm not as familiar as.
That's all right. I've been working with Matthew, so Catherine, Catherine's kind of been out a little bit, but all it is is approval to accept the bid that the contractor has, the insurance company can pay him to start the repairs. We've been having it this, the number is like three hundred thousand dollars and I don't, I don't have a bid with me, but it's, that's how much the contractor said that it would cost to repair the fire damage. Insurance company said they would pay that amount. We just needed approval to tell the insurance company to pay the contractor that amount to do the repairs.
Does that need to go through anything with Harold or Dwayne?
I got a question on that.
Yeah.
And I may not have all the pieces. Three hundred and twenty thousand for the repairs, but the statement of loss got from the adjusters, like we would receive two hundred and nine thousand dollars.
That's, that's correct. We have a, is it fifteen thousand dollars deductible that we have? Ten thousand dollars deductible, that's.
Three twenty compared to. Yeah, it's really two nineteen, but two months are ten.
I don't know. I just know that the cost, we have to take our deductible out of it, whatever.
I'm just curious about, did they come up with a new statement of loss?
You're asking me, I don't know. Matthew and Gordon were working on it. I just know that's why it was on the agenda, but I'll get somebody to get, get okay with you.
Yeah, we make sure we're getting the money.
So what's the gap in there?
Yeah, they were gonna pay the contractor or not. We were out.
The way we deal with the day mandates, like with the same adjuster, we, we, Commissioner Probst, we pay them and then they rip.
Where's, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna have to cover that gap or what, what's?
I, I don't think we know that yet.
I'll contact the adjuster after the court if you want to do and find out.
Yeah.
If we could table this, I think that might be best until we know what that, what that difference is and, and how that's gonna be paid.
Make a motion to table.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to table. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. We do have an executive session item today and this is a, this is gonna be pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one, Texas Government Code. For which court consult with and seek advice from its attorney regarding cause number twenty twenty dash six one seven six five MDL to the Archima Incorporated Litigation currently pending in three hundred and thirty-third District Court of Harris County. I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Gerald. Second from Greg. All in favor say aye. We are in executive session and it is now ten twenty-five. Okay, it's ten forty AM. We're out of executive session, back into regular session. Action item number fifteen is zoom back over to it. Discuss a potential action on matters related to the status of cause number twenty twenty six one seven six five MDL to the Archima Incorporated Litigation currently pending in three hundred and thirty-third District Court of Harris County, Texas, including any motions, pleadings and/or depositions. And what is the court's pleasure at this time?
Make a motion, take no action.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David. Take no action. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Got a motion to adjourn from Bruce, second from David. All in favor say aye. We are adjourned.